Hello. So we're gonna get started here momentarily. Make sure you check in over here with Brittany. She's got a magic table assignment numbers for you. Once we get to our group breakout discussion, we'll might consolidate tables. So we have a sufficient yield at each table. And beverage free zone, I believe. Isn't that correct? So those evil Stanley cups might get you in trouble. Oh, if water is allowed. So we won't dehydrate you tonight. People to check in. Okay, so for my folks in the AV control room, if you could get my PowerPoint up, that would be fantastic. And I think we have to have a city staff person who's going to call us to order and initiate our arts commission meeting. That can be Kristen. Explain what we're doing here and why you have to call it to order.
Right, good evening, everyone. This is an official arts commission meeting. So we can have members of our team, our arts commission team here. So we just have to take care of a little bit of business, official business in the beginning here. So that's what I'm going to do. And then I'm handing it off to Ryder to do the rest of this workshop. So our chair, Barry Haldeman, is absent today. So if Vice Chair Jones, if you could call the meeting to order.
We'll do a little call.
Let's see, Vice Chair Jones, thank you, Commissioner Sharon, Commissioner Conley Ullik, Commissioner Smith. Okay, thank you. And can I get an approval of the agenda? I need a motion and a second. Thank you. Great. Thank you. And then the report on the posting of the agenda, the agenda was properly posted on July 4th, 2025. So today we're talking about the Performing Arts Center. And this is our workshop. I'm introducing Ryder Smith. He's part of the Tripepe Smith, and he will take it from here.
All right. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. As noted, my name is Ryder Smith. I'm with a firm called Tripepe Smith. We do outreach and communications work. We were involved in the community lands outreach work throughout 2024. So we're back here working to continue the effort as we enter phase three, as we call it. We have a PowerPoint deck to roll through that our friends out in Zoom land can see. We have several people online as well watching this. So we can be as inclusive as possible of the community. I'm joined tonight by several members of city staff. I'm not going to have them all call themselves out. But on my team, I have Devin Antonio over here. And so she's helping me with some Zoom logistics. And then out there in the ether is Sydney Overly. She's another member of our team. And she's helping run Zoom for the folks that are online and answering their questions. So we'll be doing our best to make sure we accommodate our friends out in Zoom land and the folks that are in this room for our discussions this evening. We're gonna see if our technology works here. So just a reminder that we are, we're in phases of work around community lands here. And as this slide evidences, we did initial feedback earlier last year in 2024. That was on preferred uses for the various parcels of land that are available through the community lands project. And then based upon that extensive community feedback, we came back and asked about very specific feedback on types of uses envisioned for each of the parcels. So we started at a very high level. We just said programmatically, what are we thinking about uses we need in the community without associating with a specific parcel? And then we came back and said, okay, now let's get specific. How do we think we might want to use some of the parcels? Following that effort, we ended up getting city council direction based upon extensive community feedback and council debate and discussion. And what you see here is kind of summarizing the city council direction on how we would like to consider these various community assets and best use them for the future of Malibu. So Heather Kiff and Ioki, Ioki, thank you, is our, or otherwise known as Chili Cook Off. So those are currently actually, we have some interest in exploring those uses around baseball fields, softball fields, as well as multi generational community center, including pool, gymnasium. So big plans for what those might possibly be. In Triangle Trancas, we are looking at, there was no set direction for where this land is going to go. And then we have what we refer to as parcel C at Cross Creek. During our prior phases, we referred to this as La Paz. And there the council asked staff to pursue work with Cross Creek Ranch developers to create a concept for some sort of performing arts center. So we have very specific city council direction to pursue envisioning what that performing arts center is going to look like on that specific parcel. So now here in phase three, it is also just worth noting that the former Chili Cook Off lot and the Trippier lot are being used to store and stage traffic signal synchronization equipment and otherwise address Army Corps of Engineer needs. So and since we're prioritizing our rebuilding efforts, we wanted to focus our initial direction. We are the use of those two particular facilities. We've directed at just holding off on how we're going to develop those while we focus on rebuilding. So those are kind of set aside, so to speak, while we focus on rebuilding efforts. So they remain out there, remain available, just we're focused rightfully on rebuilding at this point in time. And this specific tonight is, we are here to specifically look at this parcel, as mentioned, parcel C, formerly La Paz, Cross Creek Ranch, and have a discussion tonight. So the tonight's goal really is to focus on getting information about how we want to program that land and put it to use as a performing arts center. So to be clear, in the scheme of things, council has set a direction. We are, as city staff and as consultants, asked to focus specifically on how do we enable and program the best possible performing arts center for use on that land? And that'll be the most helpful, indeed the only feedback we are particularly focused on getting this evening is focused on programming that. And usually when you do programming for public facilities like this, you always start at the big picture of what is it we want to get done? What kind of programs, activities, needs do we have in the community around this idea of performing arts? And once we figure those priorities out, then we can have further discussions about what will the building look like? What will the architecture be? But fundamentally, you start with function, and then you can get into the actual form of the building that's going to wrap that function. So like any good practice, we're following that tonight to provide a methodology for feedback. And we're doing it jointly with our arts commission because that makes sense. It's performing arts. And so we're really excited that the arts commission included this process in their outreach efforts. I think at this point, I'm going to turn this over to our resident expert Tyler.
Yeah.
And you got a mic? Go for it.
I do. Thank you, sir. Tyler Eaton, principal planner. Good to see some familiar faces and some new ones. Just gonna quickly touch on some of the characteristics of the site that we're going to be discussing today. Parcel C is mentioned as part of the Cross Creek Ranch development, formerly known as La Paz. So this site is at the northern portion of the Cross Creek Ranch Shopping Center. It was granted to the city. And geographically, there's basically a flat portion on, right, right adjacent to the road there. And then it quickly starts to ascend up to the Malibu Knolls neighborhood. Next slide, please. Tonight is that if you guys are all familiar with the, the planning process and the California Environmental Quality Act, there's a lot of, there's a lot of environmental review that comes with a big project such as this. And the good news is a lot of that environmental review was already done. Back in 2008, there was an environmental impact report that was distributed as part of the Cross Creek Ranch Shopping Center. There's been some addendums ever since then. Essentially, what was studied in that environmental impact report was the, the Cross Creek Ranch Shopping Center, as we know. But on parcel C, which is what we're talking about tonight, a city hall complex was ultimately reviewed, 20,000 square feet and with the subterranean parking garage. And essentially, this parcel being a city owned parcel is meant for municipal uses. At the time, they were conceptually thinking that it could be an extension of city hall or where the city hall would be relocated. But now, because we're kind of, we have our home here, we are now thinking of now this performing arts center. Next slide. So quickly, just what kind of uses are allowed here to kind of maybe spur some ideas? On the left column, you'll see some permitted uses that are just generally permitted. And in the middle here, we have what could be conditionally permitted with a conditional use permit. And the two uses that this would fall under this performing arts center is really a cultural and artistic use and possibly some live entertainment uses beyond 7:00 PM, I would assume, would be a function of this performing arts center that we would want. So in the grand scheme of things, there might be a conditional use permit that's needed, but it isn't allowed use with that conditional use permit in this, on this parcel. Lastly, we talked about the environmental impact report and the shopping center that was approved. And here, the architect of the shopping center, Marmo Radzner, came up with a kind of very preliminary, nothing's, nothing's concrete, but just a preliminary idea floor plan of like what could be. And that's also what we're here to discuss tonight, some of the programs of what we want to see in this performing arts center. So this here, we can refer to it back later, but this is just a really quick rendering of, you know, how the spaces can be utilized for this performing arts center. I'll pass.
Explanation about two separate buildings in that theoretical rendering, not even a rendering, right? Just an overhead map. Can you talk a little bit?
Sure. It's not, it's not my design, so I don't want to go too much into it. But essentially, they wanted to stay within somewhat of the footprint that was studied because the goal is to, you don't want to deviate too much from what was studied than in the environmental impact report because then it triggers a lot of additional environmental review. So this design is basically two buildings instead of the one, but utilizing some of the similar footprint that was, was studied in that environmental impact report. But here we have, I don't know, does, is, does anyone from Marmo Radzner want to speak on this preliminary design or?
I just want to make two is that brown area that's in the, in that drawing is actually a hill slope that just simply doesn't allow development on that slope, correct?
Well, that's just what they, I think Marmo Radzner chose to just utilize the flatter portions that site, that area is not necessarily off limits. If you look at the development for the city hall, it was utilized the middle portion. They were just quickly putting together, using the more flatter portions of the lot, what, what could be.
Okay, great. So I would, excellent. Thank you for your presentation. It's great to have an expert in house to talk about the land use issues. Can we go to the next slide real quick? Because I think our next slide is Q and A. So what's going to happen here after we do Q and A is breakout sessions, which is really an opportunity for us to do something that's near and dear to my heart, which is engage in civic discourse with your neighbors. God forbid. And my hope is we get to practice some excellent civic engagement with each other and have conversations about trade offs. The reason we randomized you in the room and why they're randomized effectively on Zoom is to ensure there's a possibility of diverse opinions at the table and force some good dialogue and discussion that may broaden perspective and horizons on the trade offs of making, prioritizing certain elements. I'll go into some more details in that in a minute. But before we even get into that discussion, I am confident there are some questions you all may have, many of which I'm confident I probably won't be able to answer. But some of our excellent city staff will be able to attempt to do that. I also just want to note, we need to use the microphones to ask questions so that our good friends in Zoom land can hear us. So Cynthia back here has a microphone and she will come to you if you have questions. I would emphasize this is question time, not three minute explanation for your viewpoint on something. So please, if you have questions, I would love to try to get some questions answered for you.
How many feet above sea level is the underground garage?
How many feet above sea level is the underground garage? Which underground garage are you referring to? The one at Cross Creek?
The center.
Oh, for the center.
I don't know if we have that information with us tonight.
Okay. And then the other question is, why is there entertainment only after 7:00 PM?
Good questions.
Yeah, so that's just part of what's allowed as a conditionally permitted use. And that's just to, usually when there's nighttime entertainment, you want to add a little bit more conditions around it so that it, it keeps things, it keeps things amenable to the, to the neighborhood and not, not get out of hand. So usually entertainment uses can be in the daytime, but when they get into later hours, we may want to put conditions on it related to, you know, how, how loud music can be at a certain time, how late the event can go and things like that.
Yeah. And I appreciate the question on the, the level of the, the underground parking. I will just observe that that's probably more a design function we're getting into and maybe not necessarily focus on the program at questions. But it's a fair question, and I'm sure will come up during engineering. I think I saw a hand come up here, Cynthia.
What, before we break out, what restrictions should we know about? And does the nighttime preclude daytime matinee?
There's could be daytime uses in terms of restrictions. When we get to the design, this is not, and not for design. And that's why we don't have a lot of design answers for you tonight. This is really for the programs. But I would suggest that when we get to the design phase, you want to stay within the framework of what was studied in the environmental impact report. If we deviate too far, it, it triggers a lot of environmental review with SEQA. And it would, it would create a longer process in the long run.
I think tonight you're gonna have permission to think big, right? Just think about what your ideas are, let it flow in the true spirit of performing arts. And we do have some kind of itemized list to work through as you do a group exercise at your table to, that is mostly intended to help force contention. Because you, you know, unless we're going to build a 40 story building, which I'm pretty confident is not going to be happening. It's really about, we're going to have limits and we have to make choice. This is just the nature of society. So we're going to ask you all to work together tonight to prioritize choices among those options that are available. I see a hand.
I'm curious why you'd have to, okay, so explain the CUP process for if you had a performance, it's going to go past 10 or like a Malibu Bowl performance. Are you saying that's prohibited?
Oh, there's just, to make sure it's compatible with the neighborhood, the council at the time in 2010, when this, when this development project was approved, put these limits on parcel C because the thought is generally, you want to just add a little bit extra conditions related to maybe dark sky, related to noise, related to impacts that could affect the neighborhood after the, the late hours.
I guess maybe the following clarifying question is those are conditions that council can place upon the parcel. The conditions are still to be determined?
Correct.
Okay. So they would probably be part of the development process and whatever advance, advancement of the performing arts center itself.
Thank you. Hello. So following up with Pamela's query about the CUP, does this mean every group that uses the space would require a conditional use permit?
No, not necessarily. So there's a, there's a, a list of permitted uses, and those are just uses that are allowed by right. So those are easy planning clearances to get with the city. This would just be for any entertainment that was permanent, that was past seven o'clock. So let's say we wanted to do like a concert every Friday at eight o'clock. That would be something that triggers the need for a conditional use permit. But once the conditional use permit is obtained, you have your permit. So then you can have those events within those, the scheduled times.
Very familiar with the conditional use permit for many, many years. Okay. And then is there any thought to it being a city building, like in terms of Parks and Rec, that it would run like this building to, for programming? So in that Parks and Rec would run the programs or would it be a rental? Has there been any talk about that yet?
Kristen, you want to?
We would assume it would fall under our community services department. Obviously, we would have to hire more staff and professionals to run the program, but that's still be, to be determined.
Thank you, Kristen.
Any other questions before we go into our breakout group? Oh, we have questions online, I'm confident. So my good friend Devin here is going to read the question to me.
Is there a reason that the plan captions are illegible? Are there city, are there any elevations? Can you confirm that we are not anticipating adding any parking under the new building?
My, I guess my quick gut check is tonight, we're only talking about, like there, there are, we're only talking about programming tonight. And the programming is going to feed into whatever designs may exist. So there may be some preliminary drawings, but they are super preliminary is my understanding.
This phase, I think we're at phase two of the project. So we're not, we're not, there will be a separate workshop like this, I take it, Kristen, right? Where you guys talk about the design. We're not quite there yet. First, we got to figure out what we want to see here in terms of programs and events. And then we'll get to the, how to design the center to accommodate those things.
What is the timing for this project, design, development, construction, opening, et cetera?
We, that's, that's a slide at the end of the presentation. But just jumping ahead a little bit, this, we will give a comprehensive report to our arts commission to review and ask them for a recommendation to provide to city council. And then it'll be up to city council to determine if we're moving forward with the project or doing something different.
And so I assume there's a bunch of other steps involved there in terms of source of funding for actual construction, construction timelines, other issues, things of that nature. Okay. All right. Great questions. I think we're done with our Zoom questions. I don't see neither hand, I see another hand.
This is widely regarded as an extremely difficult site because it is divided in two by a very large rock, which makes it impossible to put in a stage because it's, you need, I believe it's 50 feet and the most we can get is 40 feet without demolishing the rock. Do you intend to demolish the rock?
As the facilitator, but I will turn to our city staff person. It's a question to ask. I think that's preliminary to figure out.
Again, we're not talking about design tonight. We're just, you know, once we get to that phase, then those are, those are valid questions in terms of environmental preservation.
How can you discuss programming if you don't have any idea of the dimensions of the final building? For example, if we want to put in a theater or more than one theater, how can you do that without knowing what your, what the plan is? Do you intend to demolish the rock? Yes or no?
Okay. What I can say, real quick.
That's a level of detail that we're not getting tonight, that we're looking interested in.
It's the core of the project. It's not a level of detail, sir.
So, sir, what I can say is there's 20,000 square feet to play with on this parcel. And then how that 20,000 square feet is distributed will be when we get to the design phase.
Tonight, we're interested in getting into programmatic details. As those items become into contention, as we get through space restrictions, we'll have to work through that. But right now, we want to get ideas on the table and have some good discourse this evening about what that might possibly be and provide some feedback to the arts commission and ultimately the city council.
You'll certify that whatever we propose will fit on this property?
I'm not going to certify that.
To answer the last question, based on some preliminary studies, that rock will not be demolished, nor will we encroach onto the sensitive landscaping around the rock. They are, there is sufficient room to be able to create stages. The exact dimensions will be determined, but first we need to understand the programming. Then we can fit it in based on the preliminary studies that have been done and the plans that we've shown. A stage, in fact, two, a large theater, 300 seat auditorium and a 100 seat auditorium can fit comfortably on the site in the one building. And then the other building would be reserved for arts. But before we can go any further and program, we need to understand what the community's view is, what their desires are, what programming they want to see. Then we can see how we can fit it in. So we really do need to start with what it is that we want to try and fit, then we can try and fit it on. But to answer your question, we are not in any way, shape or form planning on demolishing the rock.
Okay. Thank you for those significant details. Can, can you explain just who you are, by the way, that you were able to provide that detail?
I'm Brian Gordon, the owner developer of Cross Creek Ranch.
Okay, well, that, by its helpful context, thank you. Okay. So with that, I'd like to break into our breakout sessions. And we have a couple, we have, I want to consolidate some folks. So I'm going to take table six and have you sprinkle into these other tables, please, so we can increase the number of folks and ideas that we have at each table. So if you want to pick up and move, I'm going to give you permission to break that rule. If you could, each one of you pick one table to go to, that'd be fantastic. And I'm going to hand you a piece of paper. And I would love for you to pick a table captain who will help document up your priorities at your table. Again, we are interested this evening. So you will see in this exercise this evening that there is a series of questions we would love for you to work through and try to address. And, and then I would love for your table captain to report out to the whole group, kind of the, the summary of the feedback and the consensus you were able to build. Partly what you're going to experience is there may be differing opinions at your table tonight. And you get to experience what the arts commission and the council gets to wrestle with, which is diversity of viewpoints, to try to come up with the best solution. So my hope is you engage in some good rigorous discourse about these items. If you have questions of Kristen or Tyler as part of this process, they will happily come over and answer your questions at the table while going through the discussion. And we're going to take about 30 minutes for this conversation. So meet some new neighbors, have some conversation, and I'll give you 10 minute warnings as we go along.
Hi, Zoom. I will, my name's Sydney. I'm with Tripepe Smith. I'll be facilitating our discussion tonight to give everyone a chance to kind of talk through some of these questions that are posed. I did just send a link through the Q and A. Hi, everyone. Sorry, I realized I was on mute. So technical difficulties on my end. My name's Sydney. I'm with Tripepe Smith, and I'll be facilitating the Zoom discussion on our end as far as the breakout groups. So I did send a link to the handout that's on the website, the handout that. Testing. Sorry, Zoom team, we're having some tough, technical difficulties. All right, testing one more time. Again, apologies, Zoom. I think we are good to go. Hopefully you all can hear me. If you can give me a raised hand so I can be sure you can hear me, that would be great. All right. Hi Zoom. I think this will allow me to have this conversation now. I apologize for the technical difficulties. I do want to give us all a chance to talk about these questions, though. I did send a link and I am just going to go ahead and share my screen as well. Let me. All right. So this is where you can find the handout that I had shared in Zoom. And I really, we want to hear from you. So if you have any thoughts as far as this first question, I'd love to hear from all of you. What, which arts and cultural activities are most important to you and your family? Let me get my participants back here. Howard, I see your hand is raised. So I'm going to just unmute you and let you talk.
Okay, Sydney, you know, I'll, I'll say this at the beginning, I'm frustrated as heck about this whole process with your company. And the fact that we should all be able to talk, you should unmute all of us and let us all talk together and have a discussion, not we talk to you, you write it down, we talk to you, that's not going to work.
Okay, I understand, Howard.
Okay. So can you unmute all of us and we can discuss amongst ourselves like they do at the tables?
Sure. Since there is a smaller group of us tonight, I will go ahead and do that. So I will allow everyone to unmute.
Okay, so my thoughts are, is that the cultural arts center should allow for plays, music events, ceremonial events for Little League and soccer. It should be for the youngest people in our community to the oldest people in our community and accompany their projects as well as allow the seniors to do things during the day when the younger people are at school and the older people are working.
Thank you for your input, Howard. Does anyone else want to chime in? If you can just state your name before, so we all can know who you are, that'd be great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Graham Clifford. I was one of the, I was one of the people that, that in fact originated this arts commission. And I've been a member of it ever since. And we've been trying to get this cultural arts building, brick and mortar building done ever since we've created the commission. And I had to, I've had to leave temporarily because my house burned down. And I'm no longer living in Malibu, so it would be not conceivable to make, to make meetings. But what we always conceived this thing to be would be a, a principally a theater space, which Howard just talked about, which would, would be usable for stage plays, which means it would need a significant amount of backstage area along with, with dressing rooms and et cetera, et cetera. It could also be used as a cinema with, if you just had a screen that dropped down and, and pretty high end digital projection equipment. The stage could also be used for dance and/or music performances and anything that would take place on a stage. Now, it wouldn't have to be after 7:00 PM because it's enclosed. And I mean, it wouldn't have to be before 7:00 PM because it's enclosed. And no, but none of the residents would hear anything from the stage. So that doesn't come into consideration with this, with this, with this, with the, with the interior of the building. We also need an art gallery. We need art gallery space for people to work in case we wanted to invite artists to come, artists to be in residence for a short period. We need a music rehearsal studio. And I don't know, we, we never talked about outdoor space. So I'm, I haven't come, I haven't really thought about that as part of the arts commission concept of the, of the building. But that, that of course would be, maybe we could perform on top of the rock. I don't, I don't know. But anyway, that's just the beginning of my, my conversation. I've got other things to say, but I don't want to take up everyone's time.
Thank you so much for your input. Anyone else want to share any arts or cultural activities that are important to you or your family or your loved ones or your neighbors?
Can you repeat that, please? I didn't hear you.
Yeah. So just on this first question here, anyone else want to share any other arts and cultural activities are important to you or your family or your loved ones or your neighbors? All right. So moving on to this next question here, which types of programs would you like to see for the proposed performing arts center? So this is a little bit more of a tailored question to rank these three options from most desired to least. And they're categorized as performing arts, physical arts and digital arts. We can all kind of talk through how we rank these and then come together as a group and kind of decide what, which ones, how we want to rank these as a group.
Graham, would you like to go first or would you like me? I guess it's you and me.
Yeah, thanks, Howard. I'd like to make one quick comment, then you can take over. I mean, if we have a theater, that's incorporates mostly what I was just talking about, which is theater, dance, cinema. We could easily conform that space to suit practically any performing arts category. So that's one thing. And the, the art gallery, of course, is a static space. But I do suggest that we, that we turn, conform the building into such a way that the interior space can be divided in many different areas and spaces and, and can, you know, we could, the walls should be able, should be movable so that you can conform the space to whatever it is you're trying to do, whether it's paintings or sculpture or, or a workshop. Why don't you take over, Howard?
Well, I agree with everything Graham said. He's a little more knowledgeable than me in this stuff. I just have money to pay for it. So performing arts, the physical arts and then digital arts, I would think that would be the order. And I think that from what I understand, one of the things I have in our portfolio at our venture fund is development. I think that all those things can be accomplished on the La Paz site. And the thing that I would like to caution a lot of people on is you can want to have a New York style facility, but we don't have the money or the space. This space will give Malibu what it needs right now. And it will give the citizens what they need right now, all of the citizens. So I think this is a very good location and since we own the land, it's a, a great alternative.
Yeah. And that's why I've, and that's why I've limited myself really only to the discussion of the theater itself. Because I think that's a, the, the principal space in the art center. But the, all of the other uses, including, as you said, having meetings with, for the, for the citizens to, to bring their own things in, whether it's sports related or, I mean, any community related issue should be able to be dealt with within this building, this structure. And the, the spaces should be movable so that whatever people want to do can be accommodated.
Yeah, I, I think from what I understand from talking to some of my friends in Hollywood is that what Graham said is correct. If we provide number one, then, and first and foremost, number one, with movable walls and that stuff, then number two and number three can be accommodated you in that space. But I think that the first and foremost is number one because that's, Malibu's a creative place. And there's a lot of people that do dance and theater and plays and things of that nature. And they need a place because we don't have anything like that right now.
Thank you, Graham and Howard for sharing. Is there anyone else on Zoom who has any other thoughts? Or are we all aligned on performing arts being one, physical arts being two and digital arts being three?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't categorize them with numbers that to me, it's all important to me. I think, I think the spaces are what, are what should be categorized. I mean, the theater space is something that has to be specifically constructed for that purpose. And, and all of the other spaces can be, as I said, open spaces that can be conformed to suit whatever you're doing, whether it's photography, podcasting, I mean, anything at all can be accommodated if you have open spaces that can be conformed quickly. Like there is a, there is a music studio in Malibu, or there was, I hope it hasn't burned down. I, I think it's still there, burnt down once before. But where, where all of the walls are movable, and so you can separate all the instruments and you can accommodate an orchestra, a rock band, whatever you want, because you can partition each, each player and each musician. And, and obviously the, the singers are separated all pretty much all the time. But you, you just need a workable space. You need to figure out what it was, what, what it is you think that the community is going to want to use, to need on a regular basis. And then just make sure that the spaces can be conformed to suit those uses. Otherwise, it's just a big space other than the theater.
Right. And I hear you. And just for the purpose of this exercise, just to help us kind of get an idea of what would be, if we had to make decisions tonight as far as like the types of structure and things like that and components of the actual spaces, that's where the ranking comes in. So that's just where those numbers came from.
Well, Howard, you want to?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Right, your hand is raised.
Yes, I wanted to comment that you need to probably consider groups that don't currently exist and what the size of those groups might be. Because we sometimes think in terms of like the sports teams, you have maybe a boys team and or a girls team. But if you have like a choir or a choral group or a musical, let's just say we did, I don't think it's going to happen, but we could have a, an orchestra group or something that would, that would take more space and need more seats or more parking. And you need to, to consider from the get go, and I, I agree with Peter, you really have to start thinking about the physical constraints of this property and its sizing. Because you, you have to look at the potentials. And the potential for attendance could be different than the potential for the number of performer, of performance area. And then on top of all of that, you have to design and conceptualize for design for the highest and best use, the greatest number of attendees and the greatest number of performers. Or we're shooting ourselves in the foot from, from, before we get out of the gate. And I just want to remind, I hope Pamela Ulik is on this call, but she was the one who wisely.
Ryan, she's in person there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Howard. But Pamela will probably recall her own statement that when the city hall building was purchased as a performing arts theater, the city council approved the design, which ripped out a couple rows of seats in the back of the, the auditorium. And I think Pam will agree that she said someday we're going to regret that. You know, and we've had several council meetings where we had standing room only. They probably violated the fire code. But you can never make it really bigger. It costs a ton of money to expand a building. I'm sure we could think of reasons or closets or adjacent little study rooms or something to fill up a space. But I think you need to think big and I would encourage everyone to think big. Thank you.
Ryan, let me give you some updated information. Maybe you weren't at the event that, or the, I don't know what you call it, where Brian presented his presentation at the site and then he had a presentation afterwards. What Marmo Razinger did is they took the flat area of the site that's usable and they maximized every square inch of that. The reason they didn't talk about removing the rock because that's structural, there was no environmental report done, et cetera. That alone could cost like $10 million to restructure the hill and do all that stuff. So right now, the design Brian has is maximizing every square inch.
So if I.
Let me, I appreciate your comment and I wanted to say the, the issue of maximizing the use and usage space may or may not relate to the physical maximum space as well. I mean, it could be two story, it could be three story, I don't know. There's other ways to get maximum utilization of the space, whatever the amount of space is. So that, I would still encourage a pursuit of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to note that a lot of these questions are just geared toward the programming at the minute. As I touched on in the presentation earlier in the Q and A, a lot of these actual physical design aspects were not there yet. They're trying to get an idea as far as the. They're trying to get an idea as far as the types of programming that we're looking for. So with that, I am going to move us to the next question. So which components would you like to see as part of the proposed Performing Arts Center? Again, this is just to think through your top four. If you had to pick today, what types of components of a performing arts center would you like to see? So we have a list on screen here, starting with multipurpose room, a seated theater, dedicated art space or storage, art shop, gallery or art exhibition space, auditorium, movie theater, dance studio, rehearsal space, sculpture garden, children's art experiences, graphic art, so like computer labs, darkroom, or a soundproof room or recording room. So again, we can talk through our top four individually, but if we can land on our top four as a group, that would be great.
I would let Graham go first, because he's much more knowledgeable than I am. I don't know about anybody else in the session here. But I would let him go first, because it's a little out of my bailiwick.
Okay, Howard, I'll make a shot at it. I'll just run down this list, because, you know, it's difficult to pick them out. The multipurpose room is the thing we were just talking about. So I'd put that, the number one thing for me is the theater. And it should be, I see that there's a 300 or 100. It should be 300 seats because of what Ryan said. You know, 100 seats is not nearly enough. Now, 20,000 feet isn't much. You know, we always conceived a much bigger space than 20,000-foot building. So I know that we're limited in that respect. But I would say that the theater is the most important thing with 300 seats, because it also takes up, it also accommodates what you've written as auditorium, movie theater, dance studio. The rehearsal space can be backstage, if you design it that way. And so you've, and you could also incorporate a soundproof recording, what I would call a music studio, so a rehearsal studio, that could be, again, backstage. So you can knock off three or four, five things on this list right away with one theater. Then the next most important to me is an art gallery. And then, let's see, art shop, I don't know about that. Dedicated seated multipurpose children's art, a place for children to be taught art and to experiment with it is very important. A darkroom, I wouldn't, I don't know if that's necessary right now. I mean, everything we could deal with. But if you wanted to put them in order, that's what I'd do. I'd start off with the theater, and that incorporates, as I said, movie theater, dance theater, rehearsal space. Sculpture garden, I'm not sure we need a sculpture garden, because we have Legacy Park for that. And we can put more sculpture in Legacy Park at any time we want to. So with the limited space we have, I would not consider that here. So Howard, why don't you go on?
So I think that what Graham said is great. I think because he said the theater incorporates the auditorium and the multipurpose space.
And the cinema.
Yeah, maybe just for clarification, because people aren't going to hear this conversation, that you put those three first, and then we have to pick a fourth. So the fourth, maybe rehearsal space and dance studio, I think, could be the same thing. So one of those may be fourth.
Yeah, and also, Howard, it can incorporate the musical rehearsal space, too. So you've got three uses there.
Yeah. So I think for your purpose, Sydney, it would be the theater, the multipurpose room, the auditorium, and then the rehearsal space.
Yeah, but the auditorium, Howard, if we're limited with space, the auditorium could also be the theater.
Okay, so why don't we say that, why don't we replace the auditorium with movie theater? Would that work?
Well, it says cinema there somewhere, doesn't it?
Yeah, it says movie theater, right under auditorium.
Yeah, yeah, that works.
All right, so replace auditorium with movie theater.
All right. Does anyone else have any other thoughts on this, before I recite it back? Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, having been a film director and a stage director in my career, I want to make sure that the theater has adequate backstage facilities. Because if you don't, we had a theater in Malibu not so long ago, a few years back, and it's not functioning anymore. But it really had very limited backstage space. We still managed to do a lot of things there, very successful things. But it was extremely difficult, because it was not designed as a theater. It was a church, which we reconfigured into a theater. But in this instance, if we're going to build a theater and have it usable for all those purposes that Howard was talking about, including an auditorium, it needs to have, in order to do a play there, and I think we should be able to do that, you need a significant amount of backstage space. But that backstage space can also be used for other rehearsal purposes. And in the wings of the theater back there, you've got all sorts of things that come, that roll up into the ceiling and come down and come in from the wings. And again, they can also be used for the auditorium purposes, for music purposes, for dance purposes. If you design the theater correctly, it can be used for a lot of different things.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that context. So I'm hearing for, number one, we want the 300-seat theater, because that's also viewed as a multipurpose space. Definitely want an art gallery, movie theater, and rehearsal space and dance studio, with the caveat that all of these spaces could theoretically be multipurpose.
And remember, everything's starting from the art theater, from the art studio, from the art gallery that you mentioned. All of that is, should be in, nothing to do with the theater. It should be in another space with movable walls, so that you can create any size space anywhere you want.
Awesome. Well, I think that brings us into our last question. So due to the geography of the land, as they were discussing during the presentation, the proposed Performing Arts Center will need to be split into two structures. So how would you like to see these top four components? So this theater, art gallery, movie theater, and rehearsal space. How would you like to see those paired or divided? So for example, would you prefer to see a dance studio and rehearsal space within the same building? Or do you want to see a movie theater and the art gallery in the same structure? What are your thoughts on that?
Go on, Graham.
Howard, do you want to go first, or Ryan, are you still there?
I can take a stab at it, or you can go first.
Is there more than one Ryan here? I don't know. Sorry.
No, I think there's only one.
Just one Ryan.
Okay. My thing was, any uses that are unrelated to a theater might need to be spun off in the future to an adjacent or other location.
I agree completely.
For this thing to be, to pull this off properly, you don't want to constrain yourself with any structural component that limits the size of either the theater or the attendance or the adjacent practice facilities that are intrinsic to a theater. And that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree, Ryan, 100%. They should be two separate structures.
So Graham, they have to be based on the property. So what would you suggest, based on your knowledge? Would you want the movie theater and the rehearsal space in one building? And then the auditorium and the art gallery in the separate building? Because we have to choose which two things go in each building. That's what they're asking us.
Howard, I don't know these, I've not been a part of the recent allocation of this piece of land. And I don't know how big the two relative buildings are. But I would suggest that the bigger building be the stage and the auditorium, which, remember, is part of the same thing. And the smaller building be an art gallery and photography and, you know, anything that is manual and just takes up varying amounts of room at any given time. And I think that if you're a musician and you're rehearsing, those rehearsal rooms ought to be at the theater end, if they can be, if, for instance, a dressing room can be turned into a music recording space. That, all of that performance-related art should be in the same space. And the non-performance-related art can be in the smaller building.
All right, so could we say this? Because I feel your pain, Graham and Ryan. It's like, these are effed-up questions. They're not the right questions. They're not going to get the right answers. It's going to be the same bullshit that we went through last time. But this is what we got to do. So would you say that in the larger building, the movie theater and the auditorium would go in the larger building? And then the rehearsal space and the art gallery would go in the smaller building? Would that be?
Yeah, the rehearsal space could go into either building. It depends on where you have the room. But don't forget, don't forget that the auditorium and the stage and the cinema, to me, is the same building. It's the same space. It just depends upon whether you're doing a play that night or it's a meeting, in which case it'd be an auditorium space. Or if it's a movie, it'd be a cinema space. But it is the same space, and you'd be sitting in the same chairs.
No, I wish we could get into detail and have the design in front of us. But, you know, for a lot of reasons, it's not that way. So I guess maybe we say the auditorium and the movie theater, that's in the larger building. And the other two items that we picked are in the smaller building, just for argument's sake, for this question-and-answer thing.
Yeah, definitely, definitely the art gallery. That should be in the smaller space.
Okay, all right. Ryan, are you in agreement?
I am, but I'm going to go, kind of to incorporate what I said earlier, is that I think the auditorium needs to be the largest building, as large as it can be on the site. Whichever side or half of the site can accommodate that. And then you consider the size and usage of whatever is the smaller side, if there is a smaller side, to this bifurcated constraint of a rock running through the middle of this property or something. Because you don't want to be, you know, 10% too small on the biggest use. And then you'll probably be too small on the other use all the time. But other uses that may be, are not the main theater, there may be opportunities for adjacent, nearby, or some other location to practice or do those other support functions that don't have to be at the theater location.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So what I'm hearing is, for, in theory, the smaller building would have the art gallery rehearsal space. The bigger building would be the movie theater or the stage and movie theater, with the note that, no matter what, depending on geography, the biggest building on the site should be the stage.
And don't forget the auditorium, the all three, cinema, stage, auditorium. Same space, same building, same, literally the same space. Like you have the, like we have the, like we have the City Hall meetings now. When we have meetings, we take away all the stuff on stage, and we turn it into an auditorium. It's the same concept.
Yes, so multipurpose space, but the emphasis on those three things.
Right.
Okay.
Howard, would you okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. So what I will do is, when we're about to head back into the bigger group meeting, I'm going to share a synopsis of everything that we all talked about. Howard, if I miss anything, feel free, I will call on you and unmute you if you want to chime in. Does that sound good?
Yep, perfect.
Awesome. I really appreciate all your participation. I can't apologize enough for all the technical difficulties tonight. But sometimes that just happens, unfortunately, when we're adding a lot of tech pieces in. I really appreciate your patience, and we will get back to the main room soon. Thank you so much.
Sydney, could I?
Yes, go ahead.
Could I ask you just a question? But basically, it's following on from what Howard said. Is there any way that when we have another meeting, that we can have someone running it who has some knowledge of an art center and what it entails? And/or has been involved in the construction or organization of one in the past? So that, so that we can get straight down into discussions of what is really necessary, instead of, you know, having silly lists of stuff? You know what I mean? I mean, Howard touched on it. He expressed it better than I am. But it would be, it would help if somebody from your organization came on board who knew about an art center and knew what it was, and knew what it entailed and what was needed.
Yes, I'll take that feedback back to the team. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's, thank you guys for your robust discussion. And I heard several great conversations going on as I went around the room. Our friends on Zoom are back in with us as well, I believe. So we're good to go on that front, and they're hearing our every word. So as promised, the task, as I'm sure you just experienced, was very challenging. Sorry, can I get everybody's attention, please? Shh. Thank you. So as I'm sure the experience you just went through, it was either filled with frustration over understanding what some of those nuances were between different rooms and the challenges those rooms face. It was the tension of feeling bad, because you wanted to eliminate something, even if it was for the children. It was the tension of understanding, is this space that is for creators to create? Or is this space for artists to share their talent with merely, not merely, but just with performance only and not the actual creative process of the practicing process? Those are all the kinds of tensions that we experience. When we know we can't build everything, we need to build some things. And as was noted by one member of the audience and affirmed as actually a council discussion, even the discussion of the light and where you get natural light from, if you're painting, would that site even work for that? Or is that kind of a dead-on-arrival issue? So that gets into some really interesting nuances in all this. The goal, as I will remind you, was to have a table captain report out kind of the summary of the conversation, the nature of the discussion you had. For those online- the nature of the discussion you had. For those online, those in the room, I have separate sheets of paper where each of you can articulate to your heart's content exactly what your priorities and concerns are and fill in any additional information you wish to share as part of this process. And there's a form on the website to do that as well. But for tonight's purpose, as we report out, I would like each of you to take two minutes to share what the discussion was at your table. We're going to share it into this microphone here to make sure we capture the audio because we are recording tonight. I should have warned you all about that. We are recording this evening, so everything's going to be part of the public record and available to city council, staff, everybody to understand perspectives and ideas that were shared. And we're going to make sure we use the microphone to do that. So I'm going to start with table five. I assume you're the table captain.
Sorry, can I interrupt? Can we do Zoom first?
Oh, yeah, we can do Zoom first. Sure. I'll defer to Sydney.
Thank you. All right. So we had a great discussion on Zoom. So for the first question about what arts and cultural activities are most important to us, pretty much all of them. We rattled off plays, music events, ceremonial events, sports. We want a space that allows activities for seniors during the day. A big emphasis was also on staged plays and the need for dressing rooms and backstage areas for that, a place for dance and music performances, art gallery to have artists stationed there, music rehearsal studios, and just live performances, potentially outdoor performances as well. So for question two, as far as which types of programs we'd like to see at the performing arts center ranked from most desired to least, do you want to caveat, all of them are important? But if we were ranking them, it would be performing arts first, physical arts second, and digital arts third. For the top four components, we got kind of creative here. So first would be the 300-seat theater, which could double as a multipurpose space because you can accommodate things like a movie theater, dance studio, auditorium, music studio, art experiences, all within that theater if it's designed correctly. Second is an art gallery. Third is a movie theater. And fourth is a rehearsal space and dance studio, all with the thought that these can be transformed into other types of uses as well. And then as far as splitting these components into two different structures, the smaller building would theoretically house the art gallery and rehearsal space. And then the bigger building would house the stage, auditorium, movie theater, that 300-seat theater that we noted. And no matter what, depending on the geography, whatever is the biggest building should be that stage space. And I am going to tap Howard, who is an active participant on our Zoom, to cover anything I may have missed.
Hmm. Hi, guys. I think you got it primarily right. The only thing major is I would flip the movie theater, movie theater and art gallery in the order. The movie theater should be more important than the art gallery. And I think it was the second thing you mentioned.
Great. Thank you for that, Howard.
You're welcome.
On perfection for the report. Okay. Are we, uh, table five, right? Are you table five or table four? Where are you? You're table four. My apology. I didn't mean to misidentify your numeral. Yeah, come on up here. We're, we're, we're going to put you center. This is your chance to perform as an artist. Two minutes.
Thank you. So basically, we want what we had. We want a place for the resident artists that are already here, like the Malibu Film Society, the actors and performers that are here, Young Actors Project, Malibu Playhouse. We need a space for everyone. And as our wonderful table mate Carmen said, without fixed seats in a theater, it can be a multipurpose room. It can expand to fit the number of audience members. To put some reality into the situation, we discussed the actual number of tushes in seats that Malibu has been getting in the past. And so we want to really just make sure that we, we know the reality of getting people out to the theater and to the performing arts. And once they're already in the building, that is the perfect time to show them the fine arts, the beautiful ceramics, the art gallery, right? So we need a multipurpose theater for performances, for film screenings, for film festivals. We need stage productions. We need dance performances. We need to be able to attract things like the American Ballet Theater. And we need music performances. We have wonderful quartets in town that Eric Chapman, the Eric Chapman Trio, we would love to have here. And with a theater comes the need for rehearsal space so that we can run concurrent productions. One could be rehearsing and then move right in. And those are multipurpose rehearsal spaces where you could rehearse music, you could rehearse dance, you could rehearse stage, all of that. When you have a theater, you need a backstage, which serves as a technical arts workshop for people. You can have costume, scenic, makeup, prop building. So that is a workspace and a storage facility all in one. It's a twofer. And then along those lines, a soundproof room for recording. There are often things that need to be recorded, promos, different sound design needs to be recorded. You can record podcasts, musics. You can have an editing bay so a photographer can come in and they don't have to pay for their own creative suite on Adobe. They can sit in the editing bay and use the, the right tools. Let's see, am I missing anything? We need to be raising families in the arts so that we have people that are interested in the arts and they're not just gaming on their phones, so that we need to provide arts programming immediately. And, um, yes, will you answer that? Because you guys said it so well.
The core values for Malibu, we are an entertainment community and we need to integrate that into this arts program. And we need that people like Pierce Brosnan to come in and help stimulate and teach. He has done that in the past. He can do it again and he can encourage other people to do that.
And I'll just say that Pierce Brosnan and Dick Van Dyke, they were all on the board of Malibu Playhouse when it closed. So we are just a town without a space right now, but we have the people that want to participate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to give three minutes to each group so you can have ample time. And to be fair, so let's go with this table right here. Table captain, do you want to come center stage and do YMCA while you're up here?
Pick me, I'll tell you that.
But I concur with her. Thank you. See you later.
No, there's a number of issues.
First of all, starting with the fact that the site that we want to build on is questionable. I know they don't want to talk about it, but it is. So starting with that, there's a few issues. Multipurpose room, we don't really need it because most of these rooms are going to have purposes dedicated to almost anything and everything you want to do. So that's not going to be an issue. One of the things we kept coming between us was that this building right here has everything we need to do that, to do everything that's on this list. So rather than build a new building for everything that's on this list, why don't we try and do this building and build City Hall on that area? Because you can still keep everybody in City Hall together. You don't need as much space as you would for all the things on this agenda. That's sort of, you know, our, our consensus was sort of that. We, you know, we could use a senior activities area. That would be really nice to have. The soundproof recording sounds good. That's sort of it. I mean, the movie theater would be the same thing as a seated theater. That's, an auditorium? Don't know to think we really need that. Are we going to be playing basketball? I don't think so. That's it. I have nothing else to add to this at this point, but I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts on it. And then I'll have more on my own and our own. Thank you.
Thank you. And make sure you guys hand out those documents. Who's your table captain over here? So you, you get picked?
Hi, I agree with everything that they said, except this floor has cement underneath. So having a sprung dance floor so that it's good on the joints. We want to be community servicing so that the children who are graduating from the Arlene and Dick Van Dyke Theater at the high school have a place to practice as young theater professionals and the different guilds can come in and help train kids to get into the business. We want to have a place for Malibu Film Society that meets the specs for screenings for all of the judges for the Academy Awards international films or 98 films that we have to screen every year and have to drive into Hollywood to see those films on a big screen. Then also have a child safe space with glass window for parents to observe dance classes, have lockers for the girls and boys' dressing rooms with bathrooms for each, have a large space that can double for the Film Society, community servicing, art and sculpture garden in, for the sculptures and art throughout the lobby and maybe a commissary with limited food for the kids so they don't have to leave the facility when they're, but also the most important is that we honor the nonprofits that are vetted, like the Malibu Film Society, the Malibu Youth Theater and the Malibu Playhouse, and Maria Newman's Malibu Coast Music Festival, MAMA. They've been performing in their Eric Lloyd Wright space for many, many years and have gotten grants from the city. But maybe they can also have their string quartets and their art songs in the space. That's it. Good luck.
Okay, thank you. And are you the table captain? You look like the captain type. Aye, aye, me hearties.
I should have brought Dash to speak for me. We had some concerns about the space as well. We, we're worried about that. But I, I just want to kind of go through each one of these individually. When it asks which arts and cultural activities are most important to you, oh, okay. All of the above. We couldn't discriminate. I mean, everything is important here. Let's see. Things from most desired to least desired. There again, we felt it was a bad question. We rank everything the same. We like all of it. Okay. Well, that's how it goes. Sorry. Then, let's see, what components would you like to see as part of the proposed performing arts center? So some of these don't make sense that are separated, like seated theater, auditorium, movie theater, that all should be one. Okay. And it's all separated in here. We've got that as number one. Number two would be a combination of, let's see, multipurpose room, dedicated art workshop, dance studio, rehearsal space and sculpture garden. Okay. And the third thing, graphic art darkroom, soundproof room for editing. Let's see. In the land, we simply separated it to one and two, which I just read from above, the combination of these things. So that's kind of where we were. We had a lot of debate about the questions that were being asked. We've done all this in 2012 through the Arts Task Force. It's been done. The city has it. It's basically the same stuff that's on here. And, you know, I think we're all pretty much on the same page. But be aware that we put together a, what was it, 500 pages or something like that, Scott? Huh? 78. Well, it felt like 500. So anyway, there's a very good document out there from the Arts Task Force that covers all of this and what the city wants, what the community wants. It's there. So we shouldn't need to be repeating all this. But our main concern at this point was the space that we're talking about, whether that's really appropriate for everything we want. Okay.
Good job, Captain. Yes, I see hands up. Hang on one second. An explanation for what a multipurpose space is? Or your interpretation of it, at least from this conversation?
Yeah, so it's basically about the difference of the multipurpose towards the theater. When we have a theater, everything is fixed. Like, we cannot use this space for anything else than for being seated, right? This is what this room suggests and we won't change it. So if we have a multipurpose, it's basically a blank canvas. The stage can be here, the stage can be also over there. And there's these, these risers, movable risers that you can lock into the, into the wall, or you can move them out and have them as seats. And that way you can use the space as seated area, but you can also tuck them away and use that space for rehearsal of 50 people dancing at the same time. For example, you need that space. And here, the space is limited, for example. So that's why multipurpose, you can hang up in eight meters high, you can hang things up. It's, it's kind of like you can move things. That's, that's a multipurpose room, whereas a theater, this is the stage, this is the seated area, the cameras are fixed, the audio is fixed. And a multipurpose suggests that you can every, move everything. And that's why it's a multipurpose.
And the closing comment that was you can have theater in the round. Okay, thank you for that comment and clarification. And I think that's, one of the things I heard a lot in the discussions tonight was this idea of, a lot of these themes seemed like that they could all be in one big space. There may be experts who want to question the qualities you give up by having a space that is multipurpose versus dedicated to a particular function. I'm not the person qualified to discuss that, but it raised a fair point about how do we maximize the use of that space? And maybe the benefits of having the flexibility exceed the value of having the perk of the dedicated space that is optimized for a particular purpose. Okay. Okay. We got a comment from Howard on Zoom?
Thanks. I, I think we have to consider that as much as we would, or some people would like City Hall, City Hall doesn't even have enough space for the employees now. They need to remodel, expand it. It's been explained that City Hall cannot be put on the shopping center site because of constraints and limited size. So if we really want to get something done, we own the property. Brian has been gracious enough to put together some plans that can be altered in different ways. And we can get most of what we want. We're never going to get everything we want because that's not reality. Reality is, this is what we've got. We've been talking about this, some people mentioned since 2012, you know, maybe earlier than that. We've done 70-something page studies. We already went through this whole exercise last year. I think everyone in the room and online knows exactly what we want. We're not going to get everything we want. We're going to get most of what we want. And I think we just need to get on with it and decide. And then all the intricacies, people that understand theater and plays and movies can work with Brian and his experts to get the most they can get. Thank you very much.
Back to Q and A. So we have a PowerPoint deck here. If we could bring audio visual team, if you could put our deck back up. Thank you. So, so the next question I have is, are there any additional questions that you have that you wish to ask?
Exercise, but nobody is talking about how we're going to afford building something over there. It's, you know, we've just been through a lot of devastation and the city doesn't have the money that they're going to, you know, to create a building like that. We've got to go out and find resources and that's a whole other job. And we're talking about at least 20, 30 million, right? To build something, you know, that's reasonable.
Yeah. So, uh, I would probably prefer to let staff talk to this if you want to respond. I mean, fundamentally, we are here focused on just programming. So I'm kind of liberated So I'm kind of liberated from the consequences of the economics of your choices. And in part, it's better to be free of those just to think about what's possible. Imagine what could be and then fall short of it with their economic reality that may kick in. But having said that, I assume there are some fiscal realities that are going to kick in to help fund some of these things. I would also recollect that during our conversations during Community Lands, there were several people who had high confidence that there would be individuals within the community who would step up to help underwrite, put their name on, or otherwise support some of these major facilities. I don't know if they're going to come up with whatever magical number is going to cost to build something like this, but I know that was part of the discussion, too. Does staff have any additional comment you want to make about this?
Hi, I'm Paul Grisanti, and I'm sure most of you know me. The the community we have here only needs you to put a goal in front of it, and they will make that goal happen. And it's not the people in this room who are going to raise all the money to make it happen. But there are other people in this community who are raising children here. They'll do anything to get what they want. They're working with us on the schools. They'll work with us on building things that work. If you give them a project, they will want to sign on and be sponsors of it. And it's as simple as that. And if the city is in the process and they raise some money and they get a grant from some corporation or, you know, it's out there. And there's a lot of people who have family trusts that it might be out there. And I think that's what we've got to do. You don't accomplish anything by insisting that you really want to have all the financing lined up right now before we draw the first thing. If what we draw is something that people like and want, they will find a way to help the city pay for it.
Thank you for that comment and confidence. And I'll just, I will observe just one quick comment, too, which is, City Council has set a direction of committing resources to begin this exploration phase. They were super interested in community feedback throughout the Community Lands project. They have deferred on a couple of parcels while they focus on rebuild and recovery efforts, but this is one of those parcels that they could go focus on, try to advance. And we're going through those preliminary phases now with Council's effort to help create that vision, to create the very momentum that I think could capitalize on that kind of feedback you just offered. Question?
What Paul just said about creativity. We look at what the city did with the Legacy Park. We had to raise millions and millions of dollars. It started with getting the concept and then getting the people involved. So you need to look historically when you go to the City Council on how we did it in the past. And I think that's how you start, is what worked in the past. Plus, the library funds, you guys need to look at that. At our discussion, we were looking at, the city of Los Angeles, the library already has a facility for all of the Adobe and the editing and podcasting. So that could be another source. But you have to be open and objective and hopefully figure it out.
You also just raised, I would just make a point that I heard a couple of tables discuss, which is, which is that there are other facilities already in this community that you don't want to be redundant to, right? So if you're making your choices about what to prioritize, if something else may already exist, then maybe you stay in that, let them stay in their lane, and you have a better lane to create. Was there another question? At this point, we're going question and comment, which is totally fine.
First, Scott, do you remember when we met at Casa Escobar? Was that 2006? Five or six? We've been talking about having a dedicated performing arts center for 20 years. I am now in my 50s. I can't believe I was in my 30s then. But I want to know how important is it to house the existing nonprofit arts groups in Malibu? Is it so important to the community that Scott Talal and Malibu Playhouse and Young Actors Project, Malibu Film Society, that they have a home? Is it that important to the community that we want to provide a space now? While we build, while we figure it out, while we raise the money, while we rebuild all the homes that burned down? Like, that's really, I mean, I have chills. That is what is on my heart. The theater has been in storage for four and a half years. Like, that belongs to the community. There are costumes, there is everything for the community to make art right now. There are dance teachers waiting in the wings. There are musicians waiting in the wings. Like, how important is it to Malibu to have a place now?
Important questions for the Arts Commission to address. One is, really, both of these deal with a purpose. Because is this going to be designed to be audience-serving, creator-serving, or both? And to what extent? Because that's going to guide the allocation of the space itself. The second thing is that it sounds like the 300-seat and 100-seat design are set in stone. And I strongly think that this is something that you may want to reconsider because a 300-seat theater is not something that this community has ever needed to support. So the question is, is this space going to be local-serving or visitor-serving? If it's visitor-serving and you want concerts to come in and you want really big events to come in, then you need to keep the 300-seat theater. But if you want it to be local-serving, we have to look at the experience of the two largest arts venues that we have had in Malibu. One is Smothers Theaters at Pepperdine, which has a very hard time filling 400 seats. And the other is Malibu Film Society, which rarely topped 200. And the reason why I'm asking this as a question is that if you reduce the size of the large room, that frees up space for rehearsal halls and recital halls and other spaces that could be utilized for the creative community as well as for the audience.
Okay. Take two more comments, and then we'll go to our Zoom.
Just lazily, I'm going to continue to seat and say, there's a plaque on the wall in the back of this room that says it holds 299 people. This is not a huge space.
It's in here, but I'm assuming...
Two fixed seats, which can be increased by at least 20 if we remove the old front-of-house space. And beyond that, there are another 98 portable chairs. The seating capacity that's on the building plans is 260.
So includes the whole building. All right. Thanks, Scott. Okay, we had a question on Zoom. Let me come to you, Devin, so you can ask your question. Oh, sorry, Howard, you're going to ask your question. Is it Howard? It is Howard.
Yes.
Oh, Howard?
Hey, so two things. First, we can raise the money. Let's just get started. Second thing, we keep on talking about the City Hall building. If you listen to the staff years, they don't have enough space there. They need more space. They need to convert City Hall. So we need to decide once and for all, are we going to take Brian's offer and do it? Or are we going to wait and in another five years have a meeting like this again? And then in another five years? Because people have mentioned it's been 20 years. Reality is reality. You can't change it. We have a lot. We have a very gracious person helping us. We can raise the money to do the rest of it. That's my thoughts.
Back up. I'm going to bring this to a close and just remind you about a few next steps that are going to be going on for this effort. So the Arts Commission is going to be reviewing feedback received at an upcoming meeting and form a recommendation that'll go to City Council. As most commissions do, they make recommendations. It goes to the ultimate governing body, which is your City Council. City Council will review and discuss the commission's recommendations at a future council meeting and provide further direction at that point. It's pretty standard protocol for how these things happen. All this recording, the discussion night, any of the forums I'm going to give you guys, if you want to continue to fill these out or fill them out online, will be all part of the record of perspectives. And there were some great perspectives shared here tonight on all sorts of considerations. We encourage you to stay involved. The Malibu Community Lands website remains active. There's a QR code there if you wish to go visit. Otherwise, it's just malabucommunitylands.org. If you have additional just written commentary you want to offer and ideas, they will all become part of the record. We make that inclusive and we make it publicly available. If you just email malabucommunitylands@malabucity.org, it'll go into that public record and be part of the very transparent process we have for gathering up community information and feedback. I want to thank city staff this evening for their help and support. I want to thank, most importantly, all of you for coming out and joining us tonight and contributing your ideas and for your passion for the community of Malibu as we go forth on this big new adventure. And my thanks to the folks that were here on Zoom as well. Everybody get home safe.